We call this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission order on the February 6th. The first item on the agenda is public testimony. I have no green packets or green slips. Okay, so we'll move right on to agenda item two, Envision Eugene, multi-family and commercial lands. Robin?
Well, actually, I'll just pick it up and then I'll turn it over to Robin. But I just wanted to let you know today we're talking, we're giving the Envision Eugene update. Today, we're specifically talking about our land need for both commercial uses and multifamily uses and how redevelopment of our existing kind of urban fabric may play a part of that. We have been working with our Technical Resource Group for the last, well, for over a year now, I believe, but for the last couple of months specifically on this topic. And so Commissioner Duncan is here to help give his perspective on that. But first, Robin is going to give a PowerPoint presentation that basically outlines what we believe our land need is, what we think we'll get from redevelopment, and then how, what kind of city interventions may be useful to see a kind of boost in that redevelopment. So with that, I will turn it over to Robin.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Robin Hostick with the City of Eugene Planning Division. Remind me, before we get started, remind me who saw Jerry Johnson's presentation back in November? Okay. All right. Just curious. So yeah, we'll go ahead and dig into this here. This is, as Carolyn mentioned, an update on our multifamily housing need, commercial employment need, and redevelopment interventions.
Sorry, Robin, I'll just also point out, we do have a work session scheduled next Monday to get more specific into the multifamily need, and so we probably, Heather isn't here today to go too in-depth in that with us today, but we do have next week if you have questions about that. Back to Robin.
Okay, good, good note. So we'll go ahead and work through these individually. Just as a reminder upfront, the Community Resource Group, back when that group was meeting, really broadly agreed on this concept of meeting all of our 20-year multifamily housing and commercial needs within the existing urban growth boundary. And what we've been up to since then is really understanding what this means. And ultimately, we know that we need to demonstrate to the community and to the state that we can actually do that. So what we're hoping to share today is just a few of the things that we've learned about what it might take to meet this goal. And then specifically, of course, the way that folks said that they were interested in meeting this goal is to make better use of our lands in our core commercial areas and our key transit corridors. So this is just kind of a reminder that we're talking about housing and commercial. The diagrams look kind of the same, so we're just kind of orienting you a little bit. We're going to start with housing. And some of you may have seen a similar diagram to this when we talked about single-family housing need. It's pretty straightforward. I call it the Hollywood Squares. I don't know why it's cropping up. Anyway, when we talk about multifamily housing, we really mean a variety of housing types, from apartments, or row houses, or condos. So any housing type where the units are actually attached to one another physically. So a quick refresher on the diagram here, the top row is our multifamily housing need or the demand. The green bar represents the capacity, and that's made up of the purple boxes down on the bottom, including vacant land, partially vacant land, and redesignation. And I'll just note that for the redesignation, that's actually potentially reducing our capacity somewhat, depending on how much multifamily land gets re-designated for single-family. Baseline redevelopment, and when we say baseline redevelopment, we mean the natural rate of redevelopment without any other kind of actions from the city. And then ultimately, we end up with a remaining need in the orange box, and that's the target number that when we think about additional redevelopment with interventions that we want to keep in mind. So we'll go ahead and walk, yes?
Just a couple of questions that pop up. You said that the buildings had to be attached, because sometimes we find in, for example, in West University, that if there is an existing structure and it's in very good shape, we'll go ahead and add in, you know, a secondary, you know, a four or five-bedroomist E U. And I just want to clarify that that's not considered multifamily, and how would you deal with that?
An E U is not considered multifamily. That's considered a single-family type of housing, kind of under the current definition that we're working with.
So even if it's in an R3 zone?
Yeah, if it's not attached, yes.
Okay. And how do you keep track of, I mean, how would you know the difference from your standpoint? In other words, obviously, from the rental code, the applicant says they have two units. How would you know that they're not attached?
It's through building permits primarily, where under new constructions, you know, we can tell whether it's a single-family or attached unit.
And you're actually tracking that information?
Yes.
And then I have a question on baseline redevelopment. Are you going to talk about?
I might ask that we hold questions until Robin gets through his presentation. Please jot them down, but he's got a lot to cover, and my guess is he will answer a lot of your questions as we go.
Okay. So yeah, there is quite a bit of material. I'll try not to linger too long on any one piece. So here are the updated numbers. Again, I just want to point out to folks that we're thinking about still a range of housing mix, and that's the ratio of single-family to multifamily for housing in the future. And just assuming for the moment, so that we can take a look at a set of numbers together, just assuming for the moment for the sake of discussion here, a mix of 55% single-family, 45% multifamily housing. And we won't go through all of these numbers, but we'll just kind of spend a little bit of time on a few numbers that are kind of critical for the discussion here. Redesignation, again, that's the potential for re-designating lands that are currently designated for multifamily, potentially of single-family use, and that would have an effect on our ultimate capacity. So this is a potential reduction in capacity through redesignation. Moving on to baseline redevelopment, the last time we updated folks on this number, we were talking about redevelopment on multifamily housing lands, and we have historical information about that, so we can look back and say, you know, what the rate of redevelopment was in the past. The new number here also includes multifamily housing through redevelopment on commercially designated lands, and this is part of the study that we'll explain to you a little bit later on. So this number is a little bit higher to include that additional capacity. So you add all that capacity up inside the urban growth boundary, and you end up with a remaining need of somewhere between 700 and something, a little over 3,000 units. We have a fair bit of capacity, but as you can see, there's a fairly big range there in that need. And the reason that we have a range, again, is because of the redesignation and because we're still discussing some of the potential for housing redevelopment on commercial land. So we're just, for the moment, showing a range there. And again, this is the number that we'd want to look at when we talk about additional development through interventions later on in the presentation. So shifting gears a little bit here, we're now going to talk about commercial demand. So here's that diagram again. There are a couple of little differences between this diagram and the one we just looked at. The main one is in the lower left-hand corner, where jobs on existing land, this is a, this is a box for capacity that is really specific to job needs. And jobs on existing land basically means filling up some of our currently vacant office spaces or currently vacant retail spaces. So you can create new jobs in those spaces without needing additional land. And the same is true for home-based businesses. So for example, there could be considerable growth in home-based businesses that don't require additional land for commercial development. We also have capacity on vacant land, partially vacant land, again, through baseline redevelopment, that's with natural rate without further actions. And then getting down to our remaining need. Before we move on, I also want to point out that we've talked about different employment growth rates, and the employment growth rate has a pretty big effect, obviously, on what our employment need is. And so we had a Lake County forecast from '08 that was for 0.9%. We have a more recent forecast for 1.8%. Communities also have the option, and this is really a separate conversation, but just for the sake of kind of cluing us into a kind of a blooded scenario here, communities also have the ability to select something in between those or some other range if they have justification for that. So looking forward here, we're going to just assume for the moment, for discussion purposes, an employment growth rate somewhere between the 1.9% and the 1.8%.
1.3.
I'm sorry, Carolyn, I keep saying 1.9. So 0.9% and 1.8%. So we're looking at here, just assuming for the moment, a 1.3% job growth rate. And that's how the numbers shake out. We have a fair chunk of capacity inside the urban growth boundary. Looking at baseline redevelopment, this is the number here that we have recently come up with through our baseline redevelopment study that we'll talk about more in just a moment. But I want to point out that that number, a little over 2,200 jobs, this is all through medical office redevelopment. That's a very special type of development, and without medical office, we would probably see very little job growth or job capacity through redevelopment over the next 20 years. So looking at the remaining need, that's a, that's a very significant number for remaining need. In this case, we have to show again to the community and to the state how we can achieve the goal of accommodating those jobs inside the urban growth boundary somehow through additional redevelopment with other interventions, meaning actions we would take as local government to boost redevelopment above that baseline. So that number just kind of sets the bar. So we'll take a little break from the diagrams and talk about redevelopment and the study that we've done. This is a photo of the Technical Resource Group, again, a subgroup of the Technical Resource Group that's tasked with taking a look at the technical aspects. There was a subcommittee that was created to help understand this question of redevelopment, and Rick was on that committee, also Sue Pritchard, Mia Nelson, and Kevin Matthews. And the idea was, since we, with housing, we have data where we can look back and understand what the redevelopment rate might be projecting forward. For commercial development, we don't have that. And so the group was really in favor of taking a market-based approach for estimating future redevelopment. And that's what Jerry Johnson was talking to us about back in November, is it's similar, it's like the kind of formulas that a developer would use when they're trying to estimate the economics of whether or not a project is viable or not, except we applied that to all the properties citywide with a whole range of different development types. So the TRG, I just want to kind of recognize the great collaboration that's been going on with them. They put in a lot of work through the holidays and weekends, and it's just donating a lot of professional time and hours. So a big shout-out to them. So here's what we did. We built a new sophisticated, fairly sophisticated tool to estimate redevelopment on commercial lands again, and it was market-based. We ran 23 different, what we call prototype development projects, and that includes office projects, retail-type projects, mixed-use, and housing. And within each one of those types, a whole range of different buildings and configurations and densities that might potentially occur. And then we compared those to see which ones were or were not economically viable, given the current market conditions, on all the different commercial properties across the city. And what this did is it really increased the transparency of all the variables and factors that are involved in redevelopment, and I think was a huge learning experience for a lot of us on the group as well. So this is just a little snapshot of some of the literally dozens of different tables and charts and numbers that we all sorted through to try to get to the bottom line over the past eight weeks or so. So it was a tremendous amount of work. And the next slide is the result. So this is the estimated baseline redevelopment on commercial lands, and I want to point out, this is without medical office. So for multifamily housing there, you can see that there's a range. For commercial employment, that number may look surprisingly low. Yeah. So why is that? Well, remember that we're talking about redevelopment here. So what that means is, if you're developing a particular property, there's already jobs on there, so through, for the redevelopment, you actually have to subtract the existing jobs. So with the current market conditions in Eugene, most of the development types are fairly low-density, that would even come close to being economically, shall we say, viable from a market perspective. So in a lot of cases, you'd be trading one fairly low-density use for another fair low-density use, and so that kind of cancels each other out in most cases. The other reason is, is that a lot of businesses and, you know, apartment complexes and whatnot occurring on commercial lands are economically viable already. That means that they're, they're doing the job, they're paying a return for the owners, and there isn't any incentive particularly under current market conditions to do anything different. So that's that in a nutshell. Fortunately, medical office is a different case. Medical office is one of the business clusters that was identified as through the Regional Economic Prosperity Plan. Also, looking at our job forecast for the Oregon Employment Department forecast, the most recent one, it's a fairly big chunk of our office need looking forward. And it's a different animal because medical office has tremendous income-generating potential, and that means the economics look very, very different. So these are a couple of examples. One is the Slocum Center, excuse me, and one is Ten Coburg, both on Lower Coburg Road. These are both redevelopment projects that happened fairly recently, and it's just an example of how this is viable. So we created a separate prototype to take a look at, well, gee, what would happen, you know, looking at other commercial properties with this type of use? And it turns out that it's eminently viable. So we felt confident, and the subgroup felt confident in saying that, hey, you know what? We think this use can occur through redevelopment. At a 1.3% job growth rate, assuming for the moment, that would be a little over 2,200 jobs. So we sum it up at the end of the day here, and at the bottom line there, we have a total multifamily housing, total commercial employment that we can expect through baseline redevelopment. So I wanted to share a couple of learning points here. The understanding redevelopment was a good experience for a lot of folks. It made very, very clear how closely rent and lease rates and construction costs are tied together when you start talking about redevelopment. And part of the difficulty in the market here in Eugene is that rent and lease rates have been flat for a long time. And of course, that's related to wage rates and other things. However, construction cost has gone up significantly and continues to go up. So that's created conditions that are, that are essentially just very difficult for redevelopment in Eugene. And again, as I mentioned earlier, a lot of existing businesses are fairly viable, and there's very little incentive to do something different. So certain areas are closer to the tipping point than others. This is another thing that we've learned. Now, this is intuitively true. You kind of feel like, well, you know, there's places in town that feel like they're kind of happening. Well, and the study that we went through really proved that out as well, and I can tell you briefly what those areas are. So this is kind of a close-up of our key transit corridors and core commercial areas map that we've looked at a few times before. And downtown, of course, is one of the areas that's closer to the tipping point, and that's the tipping point to be more viable for redevelopment in the current market. Franklin Boulevard, Lower Coburg Road, and also the South Wilamette area. So you can see it lines up pretty well with some of the areas that have been discussed for core commercial areas and transit corridors up to this point. So just a little reminder that up to this point, we've been talking about baseline redevelopment, and we want to shift our attention to interventions. And again, these are actions that we might take through whatever powers are available to local government to boost redevelopment above that baseline level. So when we talked to council just a little bit after the conversation we had with you all back in November, council asked us, asked staff, to do a little research on what other communities have done to try to get some redevelopment going. So we did that, and we wanted to share a summary of that information with you. And I think the first point here is probably one of the most important ones, and that is every community across the country has a very different set of goals and values that they're shooting for when they look at interventions and when they talk about what they're trying to achieve. Some are trying to rebuild blighted areas, for example. Other communities are targeting, targeting specific kinds of jobs. So our community has a fairly unique set of goals and values here, and there aren't communities like ours in other states that are trying to achieve 20 years of multifamily and commercial growth inside a limited boundary. And we also have other goals and things that we're looking for. So that's, that's important to keep in mind moving forward, so it's not comparing apples to apples when you look at other communities. So what we thought would be the most effective thing to do is to look at some take-home messages for what, what to think about when considering interventions, and then take a look at some of the specific interventions themselves, how they've worked here, how they could work here potentially. So speaking, so public-private partnerships are very important. This is, most communities embrace that as a way to get things going, especially in that relates to the following point, in areas where communities already have some strengths. So location, 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 that old adage, also applies to redevelopment and interventions. Focusing on multiple benefits, the last point here, is also very important. So what that means is that we're not just doing an intervention to get a job or to get a housing unit, but we're doing an intervention for broader community goals, and there can often be many different goals at the same time. We're talking about jobs, affordable housing, livability, culture, public safety, lots of other goals. So the more goals you can achieve at the same time, the better off that you are, the more benefits you're going to have. Thinking long-term is a kind of a marathon, not a sprint type of adage. That's important for several different reasons. One is that interventions need to be in place long enough for the development community to really come to be able to depend on those. It takes time for a project to get off the ground. If you're thinking two, three years down the road, but you're not sure an intervention is going to be available, that really changes the equation. So there needs to be some consistency and stability there. Also, interventions take a long time to take effect. If you're talking about, for example, changing the character of an area that might make it more desirable, or, you know, increase lease or rent rates or something like that to help close that gap, that takes time to take effect. It's not an overnight type of a thing. And finally, in terms of return to the community, the return on the initial investment, either through taxes or through other co-benefits that spread to economic development and whatnot, that takes time to mature as well. So concentrating interventions makes a lot of sense. We have finite resources, of course, and if you spread them too thin, they may not have the effect necessary. Pooling, connecting interventions to other plans, this is something that we've already talked about doing through our pillars, for example, with our area planning concepts. So really taking a close look at goals other than strictly jobs and housing for an area, and understanding how these things will work together. Pooling resources with partners, in this case, we're talking about public partners. LCC is a great example right now, also the E-Web Waterfront. There's partnerships that happen with school districts, E-Web, LTD, what have you. So there's real opportunity there. So how do interventions work? We can break them into a few different categories here. We're looking at three categories. The first one is freeing up land, and we're not talking about expansion here, we're talking about redesignation or flexibility. So allowing, for example, commercial use on lands where it previously wasn't, wasn't allowed or wasn't available. The second one is reducing risk and cost, in particular to development, obviously, that's one of the biggest impediments. And adding value to an area, and what that means is creating sort of a premium or a buzz or something around an area that eventually starts to affect pricing and lease rates. So we'll start with the first one, freeing up land. And this is really the, the one that we can quantify and show you some results for at this time, and we'll go ahead and do that for you right now. So as you may recall, we have a surplus of industrial land, especially on smaller lots, that creates an opportunity to balance land uses inside the urban growth boundary. And flexibility and opening up industrial areas for commercial use where it makes sense has been talked about quite a bit. It's been discussed literally for years. Property owners come in fairly regularly, just kind of on their own from the community, asking about different potential. There's already been quite a bit of effort to develop certain areas with kind of commercial-like uses within the zone, but it's still fairly limited. So there are two main opportunity areas for adding flexibility to industrial, and one is here in campus industrial, so the campus industrial or I-1 designation. There are about just under 150 acres of vacant land currently, and the image we're showing here is out by Chad Drive, those vacant lands are I-1 or campus industrial. And it's a registered guard building there in the lower right. So if, obviously, this needs more study to determine exactly how much and where would really make sense, and obviously, a broader discussion with the community. But as a preliminary position, if we said, well, perhaps half of those vacant acres might be viable for opening up or adding flexibility for commercial use, we might see a little over 4,000 jobs in capacity just from that. The other area, of course, is in West Eugene, and some of the industrial areas out there. For similar reasons, these have been discussed a lot with West Eugene Collaborative, of course, several years ago, and it was also discussed quite a bit with, among the posts on the Community Resource Group. So a preliminary estimate here is that out in West Eugene, there are approximately 110 vacant acres, give or take. Again, assuming that if only half of those were viable for some kind of a commercial use, we'd see another, a little over 2,000 jobs in capacity for that. So how does this affect our bottom line? Looking at our remaining need that we brought forward from the diagram there, and looking at capacity for some flexibility in industrial areas, we could take a pretty good bite out of that gap through these kinds of interventions. So bringing it down to around 2,500 jobs gap. And kind of a wrap-up here and a reminder, as we continue with the interventions discussion, after everything that we've presented so far, these are the unmet needs for housing and for jobs. So some of the, some combination of the tools that we're going to talk about next are what we would need to consider to accommodate that inside UCB. So regulations can be a barrier to development. They can also help a lot with a simple, predictable, flexible code. This is a Blair Boulevard area. These are some snapshots of Nacasi and San Vans and RAI and good food places. So this is one of the most flexible codes that we have, and it's resulted in a lot of creativity, a lot of synergy between different kinds of businesses in a fairly small area. And we're just now, this was put in place many years ago, but we're now really seeing that change in place out there. So that's, that's a good example. There's more that can be done and some that's already being worked on, and of course, we want to mention that balancing this with good design standards where it's needed most is also important. Land assembly, this is basically the concept of buying land, either single parcels or putting together smaller parcels into something that makes more sense or more, that's more economically viable. There are economies of scale in redevelopment, of course, and so that's, that's important. Land assembly is a long-term effort. One way it can work is to either sell the, buy the land and then sell it at a reduced cost, or use that as a contribution through a partnership. West Town on 8th is a great example. This is an affordable housing project downtown. It's also a great example of achieving multiple benefits. So not only is it redevelopment in the downtown, which is desirable, so you have more people living and working there, it's affordable housing, and it also encourages small business enterprises through the live-work units there. So this and other interventions, obviously, they include more than one intervention. They're rarely just alone, but often a combination. We'll talk about that in a moment. So grants are not used a whole lot locally, but small amounts can make a huge difference. This is a small restaurant over in the Blair area, and a grant was used from Wells Fargo Bank to create an outdoor seating area that really connects the business to kind of the vitality on the street and makes a larger contribution to the district as a whole. Other communities- Other communities are kind of running with this one as well. I don't know if anyone's heard of the Pop-Up Storefronts. It's a program that's happening around the country where they actually provide rent-free space in areas that have a lot of vacant storefronts to credit, create some synergy over time, and it seems to be working pretty well. Capital improvements. So now we're shifting to interventions that add value to an area, and the main intervention that adds value to an area are capital improvements. And basically, these can be major civic investments like the Eugene Downtown Library, or they can also be street improvements, parks, plazas, transit, other kinds of infrastructure. And essentially, the effect of this, again, is to create, to create a more desirable location. And eventually, that means that businesses and new housing and that sort of thing are more viable there. Moving on to interventions that reduce costs and add value, loans are a great example. Business loans, these work in two different ways. They add value by helping to create anchor businesses in commercial districts. For example, the Suite Life on the right-hand side there is, got a business loan, and that business has really contributed to the vitality of that area. Another example of how they can, how business loans work is to reduce costs, so they can close the gap between what's economically viable and what's not for a project. The Bennett Building is a, is a great example of that, and that's happening now, right downtown. Again, reducing costs and adding value, public-private partnerships, we mentioned this earlier. A couple examples of this are Broadway Place, where the city partnered by creating a parking garage, assisting with creating a parking garage for that project, the right-hand project there, the Beam one that's happening on the corner of Broadway and Lamont. Both projects also required financing, tax exemptions, federal grants, so really quite a big package to make happen in partnership. So the next few that we're going to talk about, or the next couple here, can sometimes be a little more controversial, and also in terms of reducing costs and adding value. Time-limited tax exemptions, for example, the MPT, multiple-unit property tax exemption that has been in effect for a time here in Eugene in certain locations. High Street Terrace and Tate are good examples of projects that were enabled through that tax exemption. It's used by, it's fairly broadly-used tool to get, to target certain kinds of development that are, that are desirable to various communities. Both of these projects, in terms of having multiple benefits, so there is the benefit of getting the housing there, but of course, having more people living downtown means that it's more viable for other businesses and activities there as well. Tax increment financing is another intervention that reduces costs and adds value. This is locally known as urban renewal. It's really a source of funding that enables the other interventions. So a lot of the other things that we were talking about, what with public improvements and loans and that sort of things, are enabled through tax increment financing. We have two districts in Eugene, one in downtown and one in the riverfront. It's very flexible, and it gives cities leverage and resources to do larger projects. For example, some of the projects that were shown here, the US Bank Building, LCC Downtown Campus in progress. Other cues sometimes use it for things like schools, parks, and also brownfield remediation. So finally, in terms of reducing costs and adding value, we want to kind of wrap up here by pointing out that incentives work together effectively over time. LCC Campus, which you see in the middle picture there, going up across from the downtown library, is partly there because the library is there, also because the LTD Downtown Station is there and provides easy transportation access. And the Broadway Place Garage is the only thing that enables that student housing to happen, so that housing depends on the presence of that garage for their parking needs. So it's a good example of how past investments just continue to pay off into the future. So a couple of take-home messages here. First of all, baseline redevelopment is expected to be insufficient to meet our needs inside the urban growth boundary. Strong measures and commitment are going to be needed to close that gap and to achieve that goal. And probably the most effective way to think about that, and to think about those interventions, is to think of them in the long term, really as an investment in the community. So next steps, first would be to refine the assumptions and to continue to narrow those ranges that we showed earlier. Next, of course, is the city manager's draft recommendation scheduled to come out in March, after which there will be a series of community forums in March and April, prior to council, taking another look at it in May. That's a wrap. Thanks, Robin.
The lights, Carolyn, would you mind? The lights. So, questions for Robin? Steve?
Yeah, I have some, several, so I'll just alternate with other people. Obviously, the question about reallocating industrial land to commercial, that has an impact on our industrial lands base that we, just wanted to, if you could note what the current status is of our industrial land. I thought we were short of industrial lands in certain categories and...
Only for larger parcels.
So we have an excess of...
Yes, yes, we have a surplus of industrial land, especially with the, with the smaller parcels. When you start looking at different kinds of needs, like the kinds of needs that are being identified through the, what is it, the economic...
The economic development subgroup?
Yes, the economic development subgroup, just looking at that. But as far as smaller parcels goes, in particular ones that are, that are closer in towards some transportation corridors like West Eleventh, also properties in the, in the I-1, have long been discussed as having quite a bit of potential for commercial development.
Okay, so in other words, these 200 acres that you're talking about changing, that wouldn't, we have more than a 200-acre excess there?
Correct, yeah, it would not increase our industrial need.
We do, and, and we are simultaneously doing work around our industrial land need, and so we will have a clearer vision of how these two work together in the upcoming weeks. But we do know currently that there is quite a surplus.
I'll let somebody else ask a question and I'll come back.
A small size, like...
Smaller lot, okay.
10, 20 acres.
John, where do you?
Yeah, I'll skip also, because I had a lot of questions. I found it somewhat confusing, maybe I'm the only one, is when you begin talking of housing and it switched to commercial, and you go from units, and then you take, say, jobs, and then you say that actually means something else, and all of a sudden you get toward the end, and you start comparing employment to acreage. And so I really got confused on the variables when you're comparing apples to oranges, because, you know, when you take, as indicated, when you take industrial land, you never stated, what does that acre of industrial land create in jobs? So what are you doing, the overall jobs creation versus what commercial will do? Plus, you were also somewhat silent, and you seem to focus a lot on, you call them interventions, I'll call them incentives or initiatives, that, that focus only on redevelopment, and you didn't indicate whether or not these apply to existing commercial lands that are open and aren't developed, or built commercial which hasn't been filled, they're just sitting there empty, which is not really redevelopment. What incentives are going to go to them to get them occupied? So I'm interested in that kind of data when comparing.
So, so I want to make sure I understand the question there. The thought was that we don't just want to apply incentives to redevelopment, but to getting these existing buildings filled, and so what are we doing to encourage that?
Plus total jobs when you're comparing and taking from others, I had mentioned.
Yes.
It would have been nice to have known that.
Yes.
One thing I can mention about that is that for the, I think that was a little box that was reuse of existing, or jobs on existing land. So that's where we talked about refilling existing office space, refilling...
Page six.
Yeah, page six, vacant, vacant retail stores, that sort of thing. The assumption moving forward is that there would be, that that would be filled up, that that capacity would be utilized moving forward. But it's an interesting, it's an interesting question about how to, how to promote that.
Well, Rick's in the queue, and so am I, so...
Yeah, that's what I said, I don't want to dominate.
Yeah, okay. Rick?
First, I'd like to thank staff, because being somebody that's been down, truly in the weeds on this for way too many years, staff has done an incredible job. It's been a real learning process for us all. Staff's done a great job of really keeping up to speed. I think we've done some stuff here that, I know that we've got state staff that has looked at this and just are almost blown away by some of the work we're doing here. So it's been really a real positive thing. And I might suggest, because if you haven't been in the weeds as long as I have, you, it's all up here now, and it's just, it's just has changed over time, and I've learned it as we've moved through, and it's, Steve and John unfortunately are coming in sort of late into this process, and it'd be great if there would be some way to back up and sort of remind the Planning Commission all of these things that we've accumulated over, it's been four-plus years now, doing this work, really right down there. There's things like, you know, as an example, the industrial lands, where we have a whole chart showing you, you know, the sizes of all the pieces and where they're located and everything. So when you talk about, well, we have 400-plus acres of industrial land, when you start realizing that, I don't remember the exact number, but I think almost 100 acres of that are pieces like a quarter acre or smaller, you know, something about the size of your house. So when you add it up and you think about it in aggregate, it seems like there's a lot, but when you look at it, you just really start to question, you know, what are those? And that's where some of this idea about changing some of those uses, where you might be able to put a small commercial use on it, but for an industrial use may not work. But it's those kind of things. If you get a chance, the Eugene Comprehensive Land Analysis that was put together really can give you a basis, but believe me, it is a long time reading, because it's four, 500 pages of information, but it's the basis for a lot of this. The job category, sort of to give you an idea of that is, is that part of that whole ECLAS study went in and looked at a variety of different business types and figured out what is it, what kind of capacity of people do you put on lands, and how many people do different types of uses, how many people are in those kinds of uses? It really gives you an understanding that, you know, industrial, I think, is 20-some if I remember, office is 68 if I remember the numbers. So there's a lot of those numbers that have come into play when they calculate all this thing, and a lot of this is dictated by the way the state tells us you have to do things, which is kind of unfortunate, because we've really discovered, I think, through the process, and I think most sides will say that we've learned about what's broke in state law. I mean, we support the statewide planning goals, but remember, there's something that are, what are they, 40 years old now? And there's some tweaks that need to be made in these things, and unfortunately, the last try to get a tweak was the Big Look, which just kind of collapsed, unfortunately. My comment about incentives that I always have a concern about is, they sound really like something important and something that can work, but realize that there's a cost associated with those. So if you decide to apply an incentive somewhere, such as waiving permit fees or reducing SDCs, somewhere else in the system, that cost has to be picked up, because we still have to fund government and all that process. So when we all think about those things, we have to realize that there's offsets to that too, because we still have to pay staff, we still have to collect the fees, we still have to pay for infrastructure systems that we put together. So for me, incentives are very, is an item that needs to be watched with some caution, because why do we decide that somebody gets the break when somebody else then has to pay for that break? And I have a real concern, because then we end up concentrating and deciding that a certain location is a great place for us to do, but that means we've made the decision without thinking about it, that some other area is an area that we're not going to concentrate on. And I always have a concern about that, because we benefit some property owners, but at the, at the penalty for others. So when we think about incentives and interventions, if they have a price tag attached to them, they've got to be offset somewhere else in the system, and I always think that's a real important aspect for us to continue to consider as we move forward in these processes. And I'll come back later.
Thanks, Rick. John, I've got myself in the queue, and then we'll go around. First off, thanks to Rick for his perseverance and willingness to participate on this. The AIS that we have has his name on just about every committee and subcommittee that we've formulated here. I know you enjoy it, though.
I've got a good-supported business partner today.
And I think Rick makes a good point, that we have been at this for so long, and in so much detail, that when we go public with this, there's going to be a whole lot of catching up for people that haven't been involved with it to understand. So that'll be an interesting challenge for the community outreach. I see Terry is here. And Robin, it comes back to me, I didn't pick up anywhere, where the gap of 2,470 jobs, how does that translate to the ultimate bottom line, acres? What kind of factor do you use to get to that number?
Well, yeah, you, you can split that number up into office and retail jobs.
Yeah.
Then you use the density assumptions that we use in ECLAS, divide that, and you come up with a number of acres.
Is that the direction you're heading?
No, so as long as...
You can do it that way, we're not going to, right?
Oh, we've got a much more complex way.
Yeah, so the reason, the reason that we're looking at jobs instead of acres, and we're trying to focus that, and I recognize that we did talk about acres when we, we looked at industrial flexibility, is that the goal currently is still to accommodate those jobs inside the urban growth boundary. And when you look at redevelopment and the way that we're studying redevelopment, it makes, it's more useful to look at jobs than at acres. If it comes down to a point to where, you know, somebody considers expansion or something, then you, then it's useful to look at acres, and how much room would that be? But as long as we're talking about accommodating it inside, it's a matter of densities.
Yeah, the other thing I'd add to that is building type. And we are looking at building type, because obviously, the densities change with a one-story retail to a five-story office building.
Exactly.
And so it's really difficult to calculate acres when you have that kind of range and density.
Right.
The model that Robin and the TRG have been working on does break this down into the various building types to kind of get a sense of which one is most viable.
Well, this is almost where science becomes the art, and if, if you're doing that, and you're translating number of jobs to higher-density development, which means retail versus office, how do you predict that that's the kind of use that we will be needing to accommodate?
Well, the, the need is actually broken down, there's a retail need, and there's an office need, so we're not mixing the two.
Yeah, see, I don't know that that's...
Can I stick my two cents in?
Yeah.
For clarification, John?
We've actually gone beyond that at this point, at least we're hoping to, is the state's projection of jobs for our 10-year plan actually breaks down categories of jobs, and I don't know how many categories it is, but it's a whole lot. And it's like healthcare, retail service, office use, whatever. And so we're trying to take a look at that projection, because that's all we have really, is to look at those different categories and then categorize this further than industrial and commercial, but actually go into the job segmentation that is coming from the state to actually look at kind of how we fill in each one of those. And Robin alluded to it a little bit when we talked about medical office and that, which is one of our biggest sectors. So we're trying to get it down to a little finer grain so that we have that number. And we understand through the process about what our capacity, how many people work on an acre of office, how many people work on an acre of retail, how many people work in typical industrial. Now again, it can't be exact, because nobody knows what the future brings, but it's a way to use projections at a little finer level than just commercial or industrial.
Yeah, I guess I'd forgotten that that's given to us, those assumptions. John?
Thank you. I want to echo the appreciation of both staff and the TRG committee. You guys have been working very hard, and you're bringing great expertise to the process, so I'm very appreciative for what you're bringing to us. To ask John's question a different way, how do you account for vacant commercial lands, which we know there are a fair amount in the community? Is that figured into the mix at some place?
Vacant commercial lands, absolutely.
So, so it is in the equation, so...
Yes, it is. Those are accounted for. And we also did a fairly detailed analysis, looking for partially vacant commercial lands. So looking all over the community...
Let me redefine what I was asking, I apologize. Vacant commercial buildings, not... Vacant commercial buildings, not cars.
Okay, vacant commercial buildings, yes. So ECLAS, the Eugene Comprehensive Lands Analysis, makes assumptions about vacancies and office buildings and retail stores and that sort of thing. It also makes the assumption that those will be refilled as part of job growth in the future.
So some percentage of our need has been subtracted for.
A fairly large percentage, actually. A fairly large percentage.
And we skipped through it pretty quickly in the presentation, but on page six, where you have the Hollywood Squares, in the lower left-hand corner, jobs on existing lands, that is exactly that. Those are kind of jobs going into existing places.
People who are working there and people who could be working there.
Yes. And then we also have additional categories of vacant and partially vacant. So those numbers are there. No, that's okay. We kind of blew through that.
And I'll jump all the way past the end and ask this question, and I don't expect an answer, but have you started trying in some scale of quantification of how much this fiscal impact would be of trying to be able to accommodate commercial uses within the urban growth boundary through incentives? Is it so large that we shouldn't be trying?
We haven't done that yet. And, excuse me, part of the reason is that it kind of depends on what incentives and what package of incentives you want to go for and how you start defining financial impact. Some, and I guess I want to use the word interventions.
That is an incentive.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a little broader and more flexible. But some interventions, for example, changing the code, from a cost standpoint, can be pretty low, right?
Other than staff and the commission time.
And your time, yes.
Exactly. We're free. I don't know, negotiation, that sort of thing. But that can have a potential effect. And then there's others, if you're looking at, for example, a time-limited tax exemption that, you know, that does have a cost in terms of potentially lower revenue, but later on, that investment comes back. And, you know, there's other kinds of revolving investments that don't necessarily go away. So it's just, you know, and when you do the calculation of how much then comes back into the community for the greater value of the development that's created and the synergy around it, I think other communities have tried to calculate that and it can be challenging. I think that one of the lessons that came out of the research that was done is it's important to be clear about what the values are and what you're achieving for the investment that you're making. And it's up to every community to decide what that, you know, where that line is. And, you know, the library would be a great example and some other.
I guess my concern, which is stated, it's sort of my mantra these days, I don't want to kick the can down the road saying, we'll deal with this through financial incentives, excuse me, opportunities and not have any idea of whether we really can afford them or not. And then when the time comes, say, oh, well, we thought we could do it that way, but we can't. But at least we got the plan passed.
I think if I could just add, one of the reasons we spent so much time talking about the potential to redesignate some of the industrial lands is there's a fair amount of bang for the buck there. It doesn't cost, as in changing the code, it doesn't cost a lot of money to do that. But we do actually, could potentially see a fair amount of jobs come through those strategies. So that's something that we definitely want to focus on.
Thank you.
Go to Bill. Let me start back around.
Okay. I too want to echo my thanks for all the time and effort that you guys have all put into this. And I guess a question that I have is, as you're looking at that finer-tuned aspect of the employment sectors, I guess, as they relate to either zoning or building types and that, are you, as part of, and maybe this is part of that prototype chart scenario, scenario chart that you developed, are you also looking at, say, for instance, if we need X amount of retail jobs and we've got this space that's really more retail than office and it's typically maybe one or two-story rather than the four or five-story, are you getting down to that kind of refinement and detail on, I guess, determining how much area is needed? Am I making that clear or am I just muddying the waters on that? So for instance, if you have office jobs as part of that segment of jobs for commercial, are you focusing more on, okay, we have some of these larger buildings or areas where we could do larger buildings that maybe accommodate four, five, six stories for offices, which is more appropriate, say, than retail, which is maybe typically one or two-story or those sorts of things? Is that maybe what that chart and scenario prototype is doing? Or have we got there yet?
Yeah. I think I know what you're asking. And so there's a difference, obviously, between office and retail, kinds of development, just physically and how it works and everything. And I think the answer is yes. We've, you know, with the 23 different prototypes that we looked at, including an additional seven for medical office, so actually 30 different prototypes, we looked at the whole range. And, but really, just from a market standpoint, not necessarily what would work well on any particular piece of property, but comparing kind of the residual value, the bottom-line value of a redevelopment project to what the existing real market value of a property is, to see if that would pencil. So it's essentially doing a pro forma. So anyone, if you're, you know, about pro formas, of course, and it's just the calculus of whether or not the development would work. And so we could see that, for example, in some areas of town, retail uses, like retail redevelopment seem to be more viable than office development. In other areas of town, office development seems more viable than retail development. So it boiled it down to a pretty good level of detail, actually, in that.
It was sounding like it. And so that's kind of thinking that that was maybe the direction you're going.
Steve, back to you.
Okay, yeah, again, I do, I also do appreciate the work of the, the exceptional work of the TRG and the staff. This is a difficult issue, so. Just a couple of suggestions, comments, concerns. One, I think it would be better for the, for most of the public, if you also express the jobs number as acres, so we're consistent throughout the rest of the document, just so. And you can make the point that you're going to plan on including that, you know, those are being, that's redevelopment or whatever. But just so all of a sudden, all the other numbers are in acres and all of a sudden, over here, we have some stuff that's not. I think it's confusing to the public, a little bit. And then, should I just do one query or just go through a list?
I'll go ahead.
Okay, a couple other questions. One of the questions that I often get asked from people, and of course, I can't exactly answer anyways, is they're concerned about how much redevelopment, multifamily redevelopment is likely to occur in, you know, in some neighborhood, you know, roughly. So I think it would be useful, if you have these planning models and you run the numbers, you could have a range of redevelopment that you're applying because it might, I mean, that's the baseline, just so it gives them a feel for what to expect.
You mean by neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, if that's where, you know, because there's only, you know, if I look at the zoning map, there's, you know, we're looking at R3 and R4 really, because R2 is, as we described, is really not considered multifamily. It's very often not attached. So I think it would help, and also would help, what I was going to say is, I brought some numbers from, that I put together several years ago. They were done for a different purpose, but I'll pass them out because I think they're interesting. The numbers in Western University soon as show about 800 units in five years added. So I'll send this to you, but just that way you can, we can compare and see if it's, you know, I think it would, I think that would be helpful.
One thing, we can continue this conversation next week when Heather is here, but what I can tell you is that for both vacant land and partially vacant land, we do have the multifamily capacity mapped. And so you can look at that at a neighborhood level and see where that potential exists. When it comes to redevelopment, we are not looking at an individual neighborhood's capacity for it because it's, we don't have any data to tell us past redevelopment rates. What we do have is we can look back, and this is what we've done, we've kind of looked back over a span of about eight years and seen that each one of those years, we saw X number of units be developed through redevelopment. And then what we do is we say, okay, based on that, we can speculate that we'll see X number of units occur through redevelopment citywide. And so we can't, we can't bring that down to a neighborhood level, but what we can do is show where the multifamily housing is currently allowed and so which lots might be candidates for redevelopment. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Let me, let me pass this around because I think it might be, I'll try to get this updated because it's several years old, but.
And we can always follow up next week when we're talking.
Yeah, we can follow, but that's for you and you can pass these around. There's two of them. One's for Western University, one's for CUNY.
Anything else, Steve?
Yeah, I do. Again, I think there is some data available. Maybe it's data that I collected or something like that for two units, for two neighborhoods, but you could do the same thing for others. A couple of other questions. The thing about, the thing that struck me, I just wanted to make clear, when we consider multifamily in my neighborhood, we consider two different kinds of multifamily. We consider student multifamily, which tends to be large bedrooms, you know, large number of beds per unit, versus other multifamily. So I just want to make sure that in your analysis, you're considering the same thing because obviously those types of housing, at least depending on where they're located, and maybe even not depending on where they're located, will have different, probably have different rents and, you know, and so, so, because what we see is, what we see, we're actually seeing multi-use developments in our neighborhood, but they're primarily used to provide, I mean, they're not really designed to provide much commercial. It's, you know, it's like 90% residential and 10% commercial. So I just want to make sure that, you know, your model is considering that because there's some areas where, around the university where there, where there seems to be an excess of, you know, there's some empty commercial or underutilized commercial. And so there's not a lot of demand for commercial. Let me, let me make one other point and then we can, then I can move on. You can answer. The other thing that, again, these are tough issues, but I look at medical retail or medical office, and I look in my neighborhood where we see a lot of these medical office places, clinics are shuttering and moving out to some other jurisdiction. And so you call for a lot of this. And I know it's, now we're having to plan on a sort of a narrower basis of our, you know, but it just seems to be, you've got to sort of at least mention that. Don't just ignore it. Just mention that. So what we're seeing in our neighbor, in Western University, is we're seeing what was once medical office being converted to much lower rent commercial, you know, existing. So, and I only assume that that trend might continue, given, you know, what's going on. So again, I don't know how you handle that. There obviously, there is an issue about where the, where the medical office really will be constructed in our region, you know, our metropolitan area. And it may not, you know, a lot more of that may fall in Springfield than.
You want to take a moment to respond to any of Steve's comments?
Well, just, one thing I did want to mention is, we've talked about looking at student housing as a separate, different pro forma, but really, it just kind of boils down to a difference in pricing, that they command a higher price, which kind of changes, changes the model. But that would be interesting to look at. And your first question was, where would the redevelopment occur? From the, from the analysis that we've done so far, really just those four areas, you know, the downtown, Lower Coburn, Franklin and South Waimi. Since, again, in the study that, just for purposes of what we presented today, was just looking at commercial property. We didn't actually look at multifamily.
This is, this is all commercially zoned and geo-zones property in our neighborhood.
Okay, right.
So it's not, it's not zone multifamily.
Okay. So we, yeah, so we looked at that and kind of the bottom line is there, we don't expect much at all to be happening outside of those four different areas. So.
Well, you might need to reevaluate that because, you know, we're seeing.
Yeah, around the university.
We're seeing around the university and, you know, and actually, we've already had two projects, you know, we had one on 13th and one, it's constructed and complete.
Right.
Across from, right across from the hospital. And we also have a larger one that's being constructed on 17th and Pearl. So, I mean, you know, you already have a track record of that going on in another area where you don't have the track record in other places, so.
And actually, I should point out that in terms of the way that, and we should probably show this maybe too, but the areas we looked at for Franklin Boulevard actually include, they kind of wrap around and look at those areas around 13th as well, that I think you're talking about are now kind of moving for redevelopment. So that, that makes sense.
Okay. John, back to you.
Yeah. You know, I know a lot of work went into this and I appreciate that. I basically wasn't asking questions of the initial work that went in there because, I mean, you know, how many ones do we have?
Yeah.
What I was trying to say is, is what I saw today is, this is just looking at commercial employment, this was a summarization. It was supposed to look at what are our needs and what are the, for lack of a better term, intervention or implementation activities we want to undertake to get that. And you talked about redevelopment, redesignation, and also the incentives. When I look at this, as our chairman indicated, I have lots of, you know, when I look at your charts here, like on page six, and, you know, we need 22 150 jobs, and I look at 11 150 inside capacity, remaining needs, 18 770, those don't add up to 22 150. When I look at the bottom and I see that they add up to 13, and then the deficit, I guess, additional redevelopment with interventions is where you get the 8 7 7 70, that doesn't come through clear. I'm thinking that's what it's saying, but maybe it isn't. But that's what I'm assuming. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, when you look at these summarizations, they should be really clear as to why you're moving in this direction to address where you want to go, you know? And I think in the implementation activities, as you did on the one chart with the little circles on redevelopment, I've driven through some of them. It's going to be difficult because I don't really see what can be redeveloped in some of those. But nonetheless, one of the things that I think should, is, is that some of the projects you had here are really big and a lot of commercial and other development occur with smaller businesses rather than those larger ones. I didn't see any emphasis. The incentives didn't seem to me to work with smaller businesses and what those needs are, either relocating in something that already exists or being part of when they solicit for something. These incentives look almost as much at, not the business, but the developer, per se. And so I had some, you know, direction that could go and a way to go in a different direction to look at how your incentives help the smaller businesses go to where these spots are. I also felt in looking at this, there's no questions here, I'm just saying, I'm trying to get more of an understanding. The fact that you drew those circles, I kind of liked initially because I like targeting. I think you can sit back with all the programs you have and wait for people to come to you and say, we'll apply this incentive to make that happen. But I think a part of what Vision Eugene is of everything is more to say, what do we want to have happen? So therefore, I think you should have a mix of programs, all, that for when they come in, you address them, but also you target areas that you want to have developed. In other words, if you went out there and made these mode of developments of mixtures of housing, commercial and whatever, what are you doing to have them develop more quickly? Because they have all the components you want, but they don't have any incentives going to them. So I think that that is proper to do. And I think the benefit will be citywide because it's going to be something that's major, it's going to impact things around it. So it has even a broader effect than the smaller ones that come in, like here's one here, sort of a shotgun approach, we used to call it. Sure, it's good. It's going to help that area, that neighborhood. I don't say stop those. I said, but you should have something in here that shows a focus for what you want to see happening, or a focus that says, we're putting some programs to implement initiatives that we made earlier and have them follow through and finish. that we made earlier and have them follow through and finish. So, that's not my question, that's just a comment that I think would make this clearer when it goes to the public as to where you're going and why.
Back in the loop, I've got to ask this. On page 12, you talk about the commercial jobs in the West Eugene industrial areas and the capacity for how many commercial jobs could be absorbed if we redesignate some of that. Where's ODOT going to land with highway road capacity, traffic capacity with the West Eugene Parkway out of the mix? Is that being addressed if we increase employment out in that area from industrial to commercial? Can West 11th handle this?
That's why we're doing this work in conjunction with the transportation system plan update and so...
Maybe we ought to have an update on that one of these days, huh?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I'll just elaborate a little bit there, you know, whatever assumptions we make in envision Eugene about land uses and density and existing capacity and future capacity need to be supported by our transportation system plan update.
Yeah.
Or it's not certainly going to pass the community nor the state's muster.
Because right now, unless something has passed me by, the West Eugene Parkway is still in transplan and that's what our calculations for handling traffic is still based on, is it not?
I don't know.
Okay. I thought it was. I don't know that it's actually been adopted. That'll all happen with the transplan update, so I think it would be useful for us to have Kurt come in here and fill us in on how this is all integrating and what the timeline is on that. I guess I'm far enough removed from it. I don't know when that's going to council or if it's coming to us or what's happening with the transplan update. I know their TRG or CRG has been meeting...
They have and we will schedule an update with you. I'm sure Kurt would be happy to do that.
Yeah, okay, thanks. John?
Couple of questions. First of all, going back to the thing we just discussed a few minutes ago, the four redevelopment areas where you're providing focus, Lower Coburg Road, South Willamette, Franklin and downtown. Can you give me some idea of the magnitude of redevelopment potential priority there is versus other areas? Is it twice as viable? I guess my concern, just to jump to my concern, is that kind of the way that I see opportunity citing, there's two ways to get there. One is you can put some emphasis and try to heat up that area and the other one is you may have a developer come in who says, I really want to develop on 99 and I'm 95% there, I just need a 5% goose, can you help me out? I would hope that whatever strategy we pursue in the future would allow for that serendipity as well as that focus. So, first of all, how much better do those four areas look on orders of scale? Do you have any idea?
Well, Rick's by far more of an expert than I am in that. Do you want to respond, Rick?
Yeah, I'd try to. And I actually, I made a note to suggest to Robin that having the model as a slide to show what it does and what comes out the bottom, the big matrix, can give people, I think, a better understanding of where the places we refer to as potential places because you see the littler numbers. It's interesting, retail tends to be the strong one, but that's because of the way the retail model currently works. As far as those four areas he talked about, when you actually look at it, what the model does is kicked out what's called a residual land value and you hope to get some in the black, most are in the red and some are really in the red. I mean, we have, part of this model will show that to build a certain type of building in a certain area, you would have to, someone would have to pay you several hundred dollars a square foot to take the land. Well, that's the areas that we say we can't concentrate in because it's too far negative. So, the areas of concentration typically would be those that either move into the black or those, which may be a property type, or those that may have a small negative where through some type of intervention, you might be able to move those up or that they may move up over time. Remember, we're dealing with a model developed today that's supposed to try to do something for the next 10 to 20 years. We're hoping that we actually get somewhat, some level of, we think we can do this in the next 10. So, the model actually has been developed to sort of look at it that way and the areas that Robin was talking about are the ones where either we have some black or we have small negative reds and that's why I was suggesting. I think that really is a very telling thing because people can see, well, if these property types or these areas have very, very large red numbers, then there are areas that are going to take enormous intervention or there are areas that simply won't happen or there are property type that don't. And the other thing I was going to suggest is maybe bring that one slide in where you have, where it shows the seven different building types in each of the model categories that we looked at, which I think was quite telling.
I think the key point here is that the interventions that the city has at its disposal cannot, don't make a huge difference in a project. They can nudge a project along, but, you know, they can't do it too well.
So, is the information ripe enough that you could take this map and add a color scheme to it and you could have red, pink, gray?
We actually have done that, yeah.
I think that would be a more telling graphic.
And, you know, I might continue on. One of the things that the model cannot predict is, and we talk about this all the time, I'm a property owner that my family's owned the land since, you know, it used to be farmed and now it's commercial and, or you take a look at the Oakway Center or the Slocum Buildings and exact, I mean, the McKay's have owned that property since they used to farm it back in the 1920s. So, you've got that kind of investor out there that, you know, has no basis in the land, improvements are all depreciated, they basically have zero there, so it makes sense to do that. And the other one that you can't measure are those people who do it for some other reason. Like I'm an example, I built my own office over on West 12th because I wanted to be located there downtown and I wanted to build something and so on and so forth. So, you're always going to have that kind of redevelopment that there's no way to get a handle on because that's something that's completely outside. So, the model itself was built to basically try to reflect financial feasibility from a market situation. And one of the things we did, which went well beyond what Johnson Reed's report did, is we actually looked to our code and built components in there with regard to open space requirements, parking requirements. We looked at a variety of parking structures embedded outside. So, the model really went well beyond what we had seen before and Robin did a wonderful job on putting a lot of that together with regard to that whole thing, but I think to me, when you see all those reds and see the magnitude of those reds, you start to understand why you're talking about these three or four different areas or different property types within it.
Okay, so, I still think it bodes to have a leg that allows you to respond to those folks who never expected to come out of that part of, it may be a deeply red area, but this person says for whatever reason...
I agree wholeheartedly.
The other question I had is, I notice in, when you look at the West Eugene area as possible, industrial area as possible redevelopment, I didn't see any interest in the area that is the far west steel, excuse me, 4J bus barn area around Garfield, 6th and 7th. I've always thought that was an area that is industrial, it doesn't make sense, but it didn't pencil out in the study?
Well, yeah, there's still more work to be done to refine which areas we're really looking at, but just from a preliminary standpoint, we actually did look at some areas along Chambers and 6th and 7th, right out in that area and around Garfield. So, kind of a cluster moving from Chambers, 6th, 7th, 5th, Garfield down onto 11th, so...
So, that area may be a little further east than the map shows.
Yeah.
And just for a little context, what we're thinking is that we really do need to do some careful planning in this area before identifying exactly which parcels would be redesignated and so for purposes of us moving forward and understanding our capacity, we would make an estimate or kind of set a target, but then over the coming months, do a more refined study, work with the property owners and things like that to really hone in on what that number is. And that's very similar to what we're doing with the residential redesignation too, parallel there.
Thank you.
Rick, did you make your comments?
No, I've got a couple more.
Okay.
One of the things the model did do, which has never been done that we could find, is we actually created, one of these building types actually is a mixed use building so that we can go in and, I think somebody was referring to that, we can go in and actually put retail or commercial on the ground floor and put housing above it and see how that works. One of the things that I've realized coming out of a lot of this that's lacking in our processes and it's not necessarily this, but it's, it kind of falls back to that, you need X amount of commercial on the main floor in a commercial zoned area. We've never really studied that issue here as a community to really understand how many square feet of commercial do we really need for a population size that we have. We just arbitrarily have decided that certain things need to be commercial on a ground floor because it's zone commercial and I hope that some point, probably after this, we will actually get into that issue because it would appear to me that we have way too much, we have too much commercial, we're requiring too much in the way our plan goes. It was interesting listening, I appreciate the comments because one of the things that I'm learning out of here is, as we've dove into so much of this over these years, we have learned things and changed the way we thought about things and I appreciate your comments about going back to the acreages for jobs because we all made that transition that acres didn't make sense to us when we started dealing with unemployment. It really was job capacity and what we did, but I fully understand your comments after listening to them, that we need to also translate that back into what does that mean for acres for all of us to do? And I think we're kind of at that point, but we're down now, as we've talked about, taking a look at the different population segments to really understand what we can move forward and what we need for our capacities. The thing I think that'll be the challenge in the future as we continue and finish this is to try to understand from a community side, where do we go find the other places for these jobs because we really are going to have a problem not having the capacity that we need for the jobs that we're intending and unfortunately, we may not have this job growth, we don't know, but the implementation strategies and the monitoring strategies, we'll check that every five years at least. Who knows if we're going to grow? The one thing you can always, the one thing you can be 100% sure about when you're projecting is you're going to be wrong, you know? There's no chance we're going to be right, but we hope what we're doing is modeling the best we can based on what's behind us and what we think's in front of us, but I think it'll be real important in the future to really kind of look at these acres and how they really can be assigned to jobs and jobs assigned to acres because that's really very important is how we make the city continue to grow. And I think one of the community discussions that need to come out of sort of when it goes more public again will be as a community, if we want to really accomplish the pillars as we see them, there are going to be some trade-offs, you know? If, we've all just recently gone through the discussion of, you know, height as it impacts adjoining properties, well, realize that behind most all of the commercial cores that we've got other than maybe West 11th, we've got single-family neighborhoods. So, we haven't got to the point of, if I got a single-family neighborhood, I've got commercial land abutting it, how do we deal with that transition area? That's something we haven't even brought into the equation yet. But again, if we keep bringing the density wants down because of this, then we have to realize that by statewide planning goals, we have to do something to offset that. So, that's a discussion we haven't had and that certainly is a community discussion.
Thanks, Rick. Bill and then Steve.
I was glad to hear, Rick, that your model allows for that mix of some commercial and residential and different things maybe stacked because that was kind of getting to my next question. It's almost seeming like the concept of the form-based code that we did out at Willamette Station, or Walnut Station, excuse me, seems to start making more sense to me, especially along the transit corridors. Because if we've got the ability to kind of mix and match, I guess, rather, instead of, I guess as a term, the commercial, the office, the, you know, medical, residential, those sorts of things that are, uses that are compatible, I mean, obviously, you know, a steel manufacturing place, you're not going to mix with some of those other things, but kind of that, taking that concept of what we did at Walnut Station and extending that perhaps to Lower Coburg, South Willamette, West 11th, downtown, those sorts of things that allows that flexibility, it just seems to me to give us that best ability to handle things that come up, then you've got that flexibility and then as the market comes in, you can kind of shift that a little bit depending on what you need without being so locked into some of the rigid code that we have now. Is that a direction we're heading, I hope?
It definitely is. As you were saying, it pairs the flexibility with the need for compatibility.
Right. Did you establish the mass that you want?
Exactly.
But then, you know, the uses can have that flexibility.
Very, exactly. So, it's certainly something that came out of community discussions. It's something that we are watching what happens in Franklin and to see how well it works over time. I think we've had a couple of building permits come in under that and it's so far, so good. And it's something that we're considering as next steps in the South Willamette area. You know, we've been doing area planning in that area and that may be an outcome of that process as well.
And I'm not thinking it would be appropriate in all zones, but certainly, I think as a start along the transit corridors that we've identified, seems to make a lot of sense.
Yep.
Did you see in the commissioner, the newsletter we got just recently? It talks about form-based codes?
I did not see that yet.
Yeah.
Have to look at that.
Steve?
I have a bunch of other issues I don't want to mention or suggest some comments. One, I think, again, for the public, I know that 4 and, I know these bubble drawings you really like 4 and 6 and I think you should include them, but I would also include a pie chart afterwards because otherwise you're going to ask everybody else to generate the percentages.
Yep.
So, it's easier if you do the work for them.
I agree with that right now.
And then, obviously, the multi-use, I wanted to follow up on what Rick said. I want to make sure you have this student residential multi-use, which is very, may look very different from what you're going to see on Willamette Special Area Zone or Walnut Station where it's really minimal amount of commercial because our code allows you to have extremely small amount of commercial and pretty much mostly residential because that's obviously maybe a very different building type than you were modeling and obviously, again, I don't know if you were modeling this, using this model only in specific parcels in the city, in certain areas or throughout the city. So, if you weren't including, anyway, you can, I've got some more.
It was all commercial areas. Every commercially designated mixed use GEO.
Okay.
But that model very easily could measure multifamily markets. We could just go ahead and do it.
Sure.
Well, their zone GEO are commercial, but measure them, you know, consider them this split where it's primarily multifamily and a very small amount of commercial on the lower floor. And a comment on that, I think it would make sense to separate, it doesn't make sense to include, there's an area essentially that would include half a block into J. D. Union, essentially the, from Willamette to High Street, from 13th to 18th and actually may, some of it may go to, because you consider probably north of 13th downtown, but that area, I think you could consider some area that's for your multi-use. Another one, you know, you've got these four areas, that would be another one and it's really not a corridor, it's an area...
Midtown.
Well, whatever you want to call it. So, but anyway, I think I would keep it separate from Franklin where you're going to primarily have, where there will be a lot of real commercial, where in this area, commercial is being disinvested in, so to speak. Rents are going down instead of up. Just a clarification on terms because I think it would be helpful so we don't confuse the public. Special area planning and opportunity citing, try not to use one for both of them because it's confusing to some people. They think special area planning is Willamette and Walnut Street and whatever else may be going on in Coburg. Opportunity citing really only is applicable to special areas that already have this sort of alternative zoning in place like J. D. Union has this alternative zone that you do opportunity citing on. So, that's just for, from a confusion standpoint.
Wait. Yeah. Clarify that, Steve.
Well, let me clarify that. The term, originally, the term opportunity citing was meant to apply to a neighbor, an area in the city that already had adopted co-changes that allowed this, well, that's the way it's understood by some neighborhoods. the way it's understood by some neighborhoods, okay? The way, what we've tried to do, it's understood by some neighborhoods, that's the way they understand opportunity citing means. And then there's another kind of opportunity citing, that's a special area plan that you apply to, say, some area that you use special planning on, which would be Willamette, you know, the Willamette Study area, the, so you don't confuse changing, you know, what can happen on one parcel from, you know, what would go on with some no-development plan. So, if you use the terms special area planning and opportunity citing, then in those ways you don't confuse people to think.
There's a confusion there, unfortunately. It hasn't been clarified, but I think some people are confused even more than others.
Right, but I was just trying to.
Carolyn's got it.
Yep, I've got it. And in general, I think we're talking about area planning, kind of the larger-scale physical planning of a certain area.
And we're a Walnut Station kind of an approach.
And my last, my one other comment here is, we talk about incentives of various kinds, and we really ought to, if we're doing this as part of this longer-term study, we ought to actually look at the evaluation of those incentives, too. In other words, what we've provided already, like, we've had MPT in place, and not just what we got in units, but obviously some of these incentives were better choice, let's just say, were a better choice than others, in terms of their, it just seems like they, you know, now obviously, take the example of all the redevelopment that went on on West Broadway that was kind of going nowhere, you know, the businesses were emptying out over there, I don't know if that's changed yet. Obviously, maybe you consider that a long-term investment, but there obviously were, whereas the stuff on the east side on Broadway, you know, the improvements there, you know, panned out fairly quickly. You could also, not to pick on a particular project, but we can look at the Tate, which sold quickly, right? And we can look at the, you designed it, but you're not responsible, you know. We can look at this other project that basically has an ad in the paper every day to trying to get the units rented.
High Street Terrace.
Yeah, High Street Terrace. So obviously, there, you know, we've given these.
Reason.
What?
Different reason, for the ad.
Well, yeah. But, you know, we've, you know, we've, you know, we really ought to evaluate incentives so we can, when we do the incentives, we try to make, you know, make sure that they were giving them to the projects that are going to give us the best bang for our buck, so to speak.
I hear that, and I think that, that we actually do track, for instance, who gets MPTs, and are able to kind of look at the return on that investment. And that is something that we'll continue to do, and, you know, that pillar seven about monitoring and flexible implementation, I think is critical. We need to be able to evaluate what's working and change things along the way, so that's a good point.
And I'll make one more comment about that as a good example. The MPT boundary was 17th Avenue in our neighborhood. We had the same properties being developed between 17th and, you know, the same kind of projects being developed between 17th and 18th without MPTs, that were being developed within the MPT boundary, so, you know, we need to.
I think City Council is addressing who gets what anymore.
So, just to make a point, you know, maybe the boundary should have been 18th or 19th. I'm just not saying that, it's just, you know.
Different issue. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
John?
This is a quick one, and I'm delving into the right side of my brain, so forgive me, I'm not used to being there. When you talk about interventions, I understand incentives are not encompassing enough, but when I hear interventions, I think of someone who has a drug problem who needs to have some.
That's drugs.
We don't want that.
Different term.
Whether it's incidents or something different than intervention, to think.
Yeah.
Although it shouldn't make a difference in the real world, it does. And the other observation is, my hoping that the redevelopment that downtown is occurring now will also help stem some of that inherent opposition that some people in the community have to urban renewal, because I think that's a tool that also might be available to us in the future, if we can get past that negative feeling some people have about it. So, forgive me, but I just wanted to point out interventions may not be the word.
Yeah.
We're open to suggestions.
We are, yeah.
Well, I'm not that good, to be honest, by the way. I just know it doesn't.
Keep working on it. It's a slow process.
Rick? One of the things that I suggested some time ago, and it comes to the dollars for incentives, because I actually, whatever the word becomes, interventions, to me, we actually had some developers come in and some other people come in to sort of truth our model and tell us if we were right, wrong, and indifferent, and so on, which was a good exercise. Many of them said that the real challenge ahead of us is the way the code is put together, and that cleaning up our code, and that doesn't necessarily mean relaxing regulations, it's the complexity of, as you well know, and a lot of us have worked with it way too long, is how the parts and pieces fit together, and a lot of places in the code, you can't do both things, but you've got to do both things type stuff. That was a lot of it. But one of the things that I think would be very good, and it comes at the council level, would be to get them, instead of trying to work towards incentives as far as, here's a great list of incentives, and I'm talking about incentives being something where dollars are actually attached to it, plus or minus, is to get a discussion going of what is the magnitude of those incentives over a longer period of time. Certainly, if the incentive's over 10 years, they came back and said, okay, we can afford to spend X millions of dollars, then it gives the staff an ability to say, what are the incentives that we can do that fall within those numbers? If the number's 100 million, we obviously do a whole lot more than if it's a million dollars. And instead of trying to always just reach out, it seems to me, I think it'd be good from a policy standpoint, for the community to have that discussion. How much do you want to do? To me, the interventions are something different. That's something that we can do that is more staff time and energy and whatever it is, rewrite the code, housing, you know, to help get housing in certain areas, or whatever that is. Those, to me, are two different things, and I think it'd be important to get an idea from the policymakers as to what is that number for them to understand it. Because certainly, if the number's smaller, which I'm going to guess it probably will be, it really's not going to add a lot to get this done. And maybe at some point, we don't even talk about that anymore, and just say, hey, there's going to be a few of it out there, but why spend a lot of time trying to come up with incentives if we don't have the money to do it?
Yeah.
And my guess is, we don't have the money to do it. And again, as I said earlier, if you give somebody a break on something, somebody else in the system has to pay for that. So, does that say, we want this project here, but by the way, as you said, I want to do one on 99, sorry, we don't have your incentives, you don't do it, or if you want to, you've got to pay more to get it done, so guess what, it's less financially feasible. And that's the trade-off with incentives, is somebody's got to pick up that cost somewhere in the system. And they're real dollars.
John?
Yeah, I just had two things. I know that when you looked in here, you, it appeared to me, anyway, that you have sort of a medical emphasis in what you want to do for some redevelopment, that that's something to take a look at where biggest growth is. I think I understood that.
It's what seemed to pencil out easier than anything else.
Pencil out easier. My question isn't, I can assume you did this, if not, it would be good, is that you've looked at similar-sized cities and just said, what is the saturation for medical? I mean, I drive a lot of places, being older, I go to a lot of medical.
I can relate to that.
Plenty in the city, and I'm having a hard time saying, how can we get that much more? Do we have that many doctors? Are we thinking of more doctors moving here? I mean, so I have a concern there on what is the real capacity the city like this might have, and what do we have now? So that's one thing. The second thing is, and I do understand limited resources, and in some cases, it doesn't make a significant difference, which you stated. Possibly on larger projects, that's very, very true, but I seem, I always had a small business emphasis, and I think sometimes it can make a significant difference to smaller businesses. And I guess what I'm saying is, is that, for lack of a term, intervention, incentives, whatever, and also cost, that maybe you could be thinking about, which wasn't mentioned, does the city do anything with guarantees? Or do they work with, because all I hear is the banks aren't making any loans, do they work with some sort of subordinate program so that smaller businesses can get the financing they need? Because I think that's a lot to do with things, and if they, and if you're successful and you have other things happening that help make that business a success, it's not costing anyone anyone, because it should be being paid back. I'm not one who favors grants in any form to anyone. I think that most people, when you look at someone, if they got an incentive and they're paying it back, you're happy if they got a grant. You say, why not me? I mean, free money is interesting. So, but I kind of feel that those things should be looked at, because like, as Commissioner Duncan mentioned, you know, you can have commerce or commercial on the first, and then housing on the second. I've seen some of that, and the banks won't finance it if anywhere in the area there's vacant on the first floor, commercial or whatever, even if the housing itself can pay the debt service by what it generates. So we have some problems, and I think that the city can do something to move that forward and not just wait for the banking community to do something. They can move in and say, you know, we'll either assist the banking community, or we can work with you in another way. And I didn't see enough of that in here.
There is, there is a lot of that going on, and we didn't touch on it in here, in this presentation, but actually, I could, I'll send you a link to a presentation we made to City Council two weeks ago about economic development and the Joint Elected Officials Economic Prosperity Plan, which is kind of the bigger arching umbrella about economic development in this community and everything that is going on under that plan. And it's very informative, and there's a tremendous amount going on. We were just kind of looking at a smaller subsection of that today, but I'd be happy to send that out, and we can follow up, too.
Anything else, John? Steve, back to you.
Just a one quick comment. I'm all in favor of rewriting the, a major rewrite of the code, and I keep looking at the Portland code that handles their multifamily dwelling zones in 35 pages, that's all of their, you know, obviously not special area plans, but basically, it's all in one place, not spread all over the code. So if you're doing multi, you know, multi, development in a multi-dwelling zone, just read that chapter and you know all the things you need to know, you know? I mean, that's the kind of, I think we should be using that as a model of simplifying the code, rather than trying to continue our little shotgun approach. Just doesn't make sense in the long run.
Any other comments for Carolyn or Robin?
Thank you.
Was that a motion?
Thanks very much. This city manager is targeting March for a recommendation, and I assume that's March of 2012.
Hey, that's correct.
Which is next month.
It better, I don't have many years left.
Yeah.
March 14th.
March 14th.
Already done before this term's over.
And Carolyn, might we get Kurt in before then to fill us in on what's happening with transplan, but perhaps more importantly, how it's taking in with the land use effort?
I will look at the scheduling. We have you guys pretty well booked through February, but I'll look at early March and see if we have any time.
What, do you all concur with that? Okay. Robin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good comments.
Carolyn's lead staff, any comments, staff comments?
No, I'd just say we are keeping you busy between, we have a seminar we're holding all together, and then.
February 21st, is that it?
The day after President's Day, is that right? Yes, that's correct.
Tuesday afternoon.
One to five?
Yep.
Thanks.
And there's no meeting tomorrow, and then meeting next week.
And so, just.
No, no meeting tomorrow.
See you then, and.
What about, John mentioned again, discussion about CLUTAC with the Sustainability Commission?
Yes, we will absolutely get that scheduled.
Okay, in time to give a skateback to the council before their decision.
Yes.
That's the MX.
Right. And I did confirm with Josh Go that council is expecting to see that.
Okay.
Anything else, Carolyn?
No.
Commission members? I see Terry Harding is here, and if you all got your email from the Oregon Chapter of the APA, we have a candidate for Board at Large. I'm sure that she would appreciate votes. I think we're all members of APA. John and Steve, if you guys aren't, you might contact Cara. Are you getting the Commissioner newsletter and planning?
No.
I don't think we get to vote.
Pardon?
I think we're non-voting members.
Really?
Let's vote and find out. All they can do is say no, thanks.
Let's go occupy APA Oregon.
Vote for her for Prince.
You two need to contact Cara then, and talk about getting rolled into the APA and the Oregon Chapter, and getting Planning Magazine, and all the benefits of being a planning commission member.
I don't remember seeing.
Really?
Yeah.
I'll forward it to you all. Okay. Our next meeting is next Monday. We will finish the multifamily code amendments, and also hear more about multifamily in Vision Eugene, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any else? We are adjourned.